Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, September 25, 2017. I'd ask our city clerk for a roll call, please.
Jacobson? Finnucan?
Here.
Markhart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbeck?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Seven present.
I'd ask our police officer on duty tonight, Keith Urquide, to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith. Now on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Jacobson? Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
There are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. We move on to item E on our agenda, special items or presentations and citizens' comments. The first special item is proudly DeKalb. If you would be so kind as to look at our screen tonight, I'd ask that this be put on the screen because of a very interesting dynamic. There is a group, an interfaith group, in our community, and many of you may be aware of Beloved Community. That organization holds a number of monthly, or a number of monthly potluck dinners at various churches and in our area to discuss items of what is right and basically geared for social justice. My friend, Misty Haji Sheik, after having spoken with a beloved community member, Irene Rubin, about the controversies surrounding immigration in our community, thought that it would be a good idea to have a graphic display of this. She asked her daughter, this is Micah Haji Sheik, who is a student in Las Vegas and who is into graphic arts, to put together something that would, in a sentence, say something that so many of us feel and so many of us may believe. And when I saw this, I said, "That is really something." "We are all immigrants and all are welcome here." Now after Misty had shown this to her, had shown this to Irene Rubin, if you know Herb and Irene, they didn't want to just see this, they wanted to do something with it. So they purchased a two-month stay on Husky Bus Line Number 7, or the buses that run on Husky 7, this very same sign. What I'm impressed about is not only the quality of the sign, but this is what community is all about. People getting together, coming up with an idea like that, and moving it forward. Proudly DeKalb. We have a proclamation this evening, and that is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I'd like to read that to you, if I may. "I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do proclaim the month of October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the City of DeKalb. Let us stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors and thank the countless advocates, medical professionals, researchers, and caregivers who dedicate their lives to fighting for a world without breast cancer. And together, let us carry out the mission to cure cancer once and for all. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the city of, the seal of the City of DeKalb on this 25th day of September 2017." And I'm going to present this proclamation to our HR Director, Chris Randall. Chris? Okay, moving forward, there are no other special presentations, I believe. Number three on our agenda tonight, approval of the mayor's appointments. We have several, and I'd like to, I'd like to take those individually, if I may. The first one is appointments to the Annie Glidden North Revitalization, Revitalization Plan Task Force. Jay Anderson, Morgan Brickley, Michelle Bringus, Deanna Kada, David Castro, Jamie Craven, Rudy Galvin, Joe Gastiger, Chad Glover, Rachel Jacob, Will Heinisch, Derek Highland, Tiara Huggins, Dan Kenny, A.J. Knox, Kristy Krupp, Mohammed Labadi, Leroy Mitchell, Michael Newman, Shelley Perkins, Patty Perkins, Mike Pittsley, Valerie Redman, Glenn Robey, Herb Rubin, Isela Skeeth, Gip Seaver, Kurt Thurmeier, Ellingsworth Webb, and Denise Weinman. I would like to mention before I ask for a approval of those appointments, that Carrie Malott, who I had originally appointed to this council, had given it some thought, and he felt that he had a potential conflict of interest and chose not to serve on the task force. Given the fact, council, that Carrie was recommended by the DeKalb School District, and given the fact that Jamie Craven, the school superintendent, will be serving, I felt it was not necessary at this time to put another replacement in there. So I would ask for a motion to, first of all, is there any discussion? I would like to then ask for a motion to approve the appointments to the North Annie Glidden Road Mayoral Task Force.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Item B, appointment of Alderman Bill Finnucan as council liaison to the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Project Task Force. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Item C, appointment of Alderman Dave Jacobson, council liaison to the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Project Task Force. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Been moved and seconded? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Before we move on to the appointment of Mr. Fagan here, I'd like to make just a couple of announcements regarding the Annie Glidden North Task Force. And I appreciate Alderman Jacobson from our First Ward and Alderman Finnucan from our Second, who have agreed to be the liaison to this council for the task force. They are not task force members, they are liaison between the city council and, and the task force. Given the fact that the task force itself, and the half a dozen meetings or thereabout what we will probably have between this time this year and this time next year, and the fact that we have also scheduled community meetings, at which time our community can have a more active participation in what the task force has done, is doing, whatever. Because those are both public meetings, they both fall under the auspices of the Illinois Opens Meeting Act, Open Meetings Act. So picture this scenario. The mayor is there, Alderman Jacobson is there, Alderman Finnucan is there. We start having a discussion on this, we are in violation of the Open Meetings Act. After conferring with our city attorney, I'm told that I will be allowed this Wednesday, since it's a mayoral task force, to at least be there early on to make a few brief comments, at which time I will leave the meeting. And at that point, Bill Finnucan and Dave Jacobson will be able to participate in that Moving forward then into the community meeting, I will ask Dave and Bill to assist Camero's in seeing just what, just what the public may want to discuss during our first community It is because of the fact that we're going to allow Camero's, the agency that we hired, to sort of roadmap us through this revitalization plan, we're going to let them pretty much drive the agenda, or drive at least the meeting on Wednesday night, the task force meeting. We'll see what the task force is saying, will want to say. Because of that, I have decided not to name a chair of the task force, or perhaps co-chairs. I may very well not name a chair or co-chair if our two liaison members, Bill and Dave, might find that they might want to drive those community meetings. So we'll see how that goes. I want folks to know that this will be a fluid situation. Believe me, I could have named 60 people instead of 30 very easily. That's how many people were interested in this process, and that is so heartening to me. So I wanted to make that clear so that if no one sees the mayor at the mayoral task force meetings, they will know why. Let's move on to item D, appointment of Alderman Pat Fagan as the council liaison to the Economic Development Commission. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, David, and thank you, Pat, for agreeing to serve in those liaison capacities. Okay, let's move on to public participation. If someone has registered to speak on an item not listed on the agenda, is there any, do we have any requests, Sue?
No.
None? Anyone who perhaps just inadvertently did not fill out a request for speaking, to speak to an item not on tonight's agenda? We then now move to the consent agenda. In most cases, our consent agenda, as those of you who follow us month by month, week by week, probably know we do this by, we can do it by an omnibus vote. All items listed on the consent agenda are enacted in one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items, which I will read unless requested by a council member. Are there any council members who choose to remove any items from our consent agenda? If not, may I read those to you? Number one, approval of city council minutes. A, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of August 28, 2017. B, minutes of the city council meeting of August 28, 2017. C, minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting of August 31, 2017. Number two, receive and file. A, accounts payable and payroll through September 25, 2017, in the amount of $2,020,247. B, investment and bank balance summary, July 2017. And C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund and water fund through July 2017. I'd ask for a motion to approve of the consent agenda and all items listed.
Make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay, now we get to item G on our agenda this evening, items for separate action. Number one, Resolution 2017-109, authorizing a restaurant bar liquor license for ERJ Dining ILL LLC doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar at 2370 Sycamore Road. Ask for a motion to put this on the discussion item, please.
So moved.
I'd like now for City Attorney Dean Frieders, who will speak to this item. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. As the councils are aware, there is a Chili's proposal located at 2370 Sycamore Road. That facility would be operated with a liquor license permitting both bar and restaurant sales. They would have a defined bar area separated from the rest of the premises by a half-wall with their traditional layout, so a portion of the facility will have an actual bar that you can sit at, and high-top tables and some booths around it. A physical separation in the balance of the restaurant would be constructed as a restaurant. They will have bathroom facilities that are available in the restaurant portion so that minors wouldn't have to enter the bar area. They do comply with all the codes that have been applied to it thus far. They've been very good on working with us on ensuring that they comply with the liquor code and provide that physical separation between the bar and restaurant area. The premises is not yet fully built out, so the recommendation is to approve this with the contingencies listed in the resolution. So those do include the final completion of a fire life safety inspection and granting of that license, which happens at the staff level, and issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. They have completed all other components of the license application process, including the background check with flying colors, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Dean. Any further discussion on this item? It's been moved and seconded that we approve it? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markhart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Moving along to number two on our agenda items tonight for items for separate action. You may recall during our committee of the whole meeting tonight, we did discuss the possibility of implementing a downtown business district wireless internet project. Mark Thorson, our IT Director, had a number of folks out from Digital Lobby. We discussed that, and I'd like now to suggest that we move this forward. We will, I will ask for a motion in a second so that we can further discuss what we had heard at the committee of the whole meeting, and obviously, there will be some things brought out in this particular resolution, which was not, which was not brought up during our committee of the whole. So it's Resolution 2017-110, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University for the implementation of a downtown business district wireless internet project in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, can I interrupt? There's a typo on the agenda, it should be $30,000, not $15,000. So in the subject line in the memo, it's $30,000.
There is a difference there.
So we would ask if the movement and second would clarify the motion to reference that $30,000.
Make that motion to clarify.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded now that we move on this item, and let me reread it, reread it just in case. Resolution 2017-110, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University for the implementation of a downtown business district wireless internet project in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we need discussion on that.
We do, please.
We need discussion on that.
No, let's put Dave on.
Okay. Alderman Finnucan, how many times have you corrected me up here?
Apparently not enough yet.
Let me, let him count the ways. Okay, I apologize for that. It's been moved and seconded, now let's have some discussion. Bill, does you have?
I think.
Oh, Mark, you're going to make the presentation, excuse me.
Absolutely. And let me clarify that the reason that there was a $15,000 amount, which was then changed to a $30,000 amount, is because I misread what was itemized in the budget, and I had to correct that, that error, and obviously, I missed a spot when I was correcting it. So I have to apologize for the confusion with that. I'd like to present tonight for your consideration, an intergovernmental agreement between the City of DeKalb and Northern Illinois University, which will enable us to be able to put some infrastructure in a limited fashion into the downtown business district. This would cover from Carroll Avenue along Lincoln Highway and terminate in, at Fourth Street and Lincoln Highway. It's a limited scope because that's the amount of funds that we have, but this is, I know the word "foundation" has been kind of thrown around a little bit, but we're looking at this as a foundation piece to be able to move forward. And so, we're looking, and we're also understanding that the, the proposal that we brought to the committee of the whole can take a time to negotiate all of the details that are involved with that. What we're asking council to provide us approval on is to be able to move forward with this limited scope project, to be able to get some infrastructure in that area. And that will actually dovetail back in, if we're given permission to continue discussion with the Digital Lobby Company with regards to completing the coverage of that downtown business district and giving us access to all the benefits that were outlaid in that So, so the intergovernmental agreement provides all the, outlines who's responsible for the different aspects of the project, and it also understand, it also respects ownership of the, the existing assets and any new assets as provided. So, and we are not expecting to, well, we are not going to exceed $30,000 from the city's aspect with regards to this project. It should be noted that we're, this is a budgeted item in the fiscal year 2017 using TIF funds. We, as staff, have evaluated this project, and we believe it qualifies as part of the infrastructure piece of TIF to be able to move forward. And again, understanding that that, along with all the other improvements going on in that area, are all working together to be able to continue that momentum. And so that's why we feel that this is appropriate to, to make the recommendation to council. And with that, if there's any questions on this, I just wanted to clarify how the two projects are related, but are actually separate items.
Since I jumped the gun and tried to get a motion right away, I know this council will have some questions. Alderman, Noriko.
So, in other words, this project at up to $30,000 is something that needs to be done regardless of what we end up doing with digital lobby?
Yes.
And what will this give us before we get anything more?
Infrastructure in place before we are able to come to council with a recommendation from the Digital Lobby standpoint.
So with just this infrastructure, how would my life as a DeKalb resident who comes downtown change?
So this in essence, at least the, the scope of this, would extend Northern Illinois University's Wi-Fi network into the downtown area. It would also provide allowances to extend the city's private network into the downtown infrastructure, which would allow us to be able to put some additional items that we, that we have budgeted as well in place with regards to public safety cameras and other things. It provides that infrastructure that allows us to move forward with some of these other projects that are, that are important to the city. And it also would provide guest access to the, to the public as well. We would not have the platform in place as provided by the committee of the whole project. We would simply be providing a guest access to that in some fashion.
Okay. So.
Excuse me.
So this is something that regardless of that project, we should do, but if we do decide to go with that project, we absolutely need this piece.
Yes, it would make the other project more difficult to accomplish if this project is not approved to move forward.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I had, I, we wanted to ensure that we were able to address council's concerns and get approval to move forward with the ability to put Wi-Fi in the downtown district in some fashion, as was a budgeted item in this fiscal year. But as we were discussing with NIU, the Digital Lobby project became apparent, and we wanted to investigate that as well. But we have to understand that that project can take time to discuss all of the details that are involved with that. So we wanted to, so for, for two purposes, as you just outlined, one is, we have, we want to put this foundational infrastructure in place to benefit that other project. It would be more difficult to do that other project without this in place. At the same time, we wanted to look at it from a pragmatic standpoint, understanding that there is time needed to discuss all of the details and make sure that, that council or that- or that city staff and NIU has done our due diligence before bringing a recommendation to you on that project.
So, this is something that you can move forward with, with some hope or desire that the other project will be approved, and then this ideally would be in place so that if that other project is approved, it would save some time and I would think possibly some dollars that this is already in place.
Exactly. It, it definitely assists that other project and makes it, makes it more feasible to, to move forward.
Okay. You know, it's a whole lot easier to understand when we have to approve an ambulance or a police car or a dump truck or something, but I think I, okay, thank you.
Sure. Alderman Fagan?
Mark, why are you stopping on Fourth Street where I believe, on Lincoln Highway, you said there was, go to the Fourth Street, not down to Seventh Street?
Purely an economic decision. We, we could not get further down to, to Seventh Street, given the resources that we were allocating to this project.
How much more would that be, did you think? Do you think?
I would have to defer because quite frankly, as outlined in this agreement, we are, we are using NIU's expertise in this scenario to help us understand what type of infrastructure would make sense. And so, the work that's been done, outlined with the amount of money that we were, that we were working with, that's as far as that got us. I can certainly circle back and find out.
Yeah, if you could.
How much it would.
Because one of the things that we're talking about is for the, under the COW, they have the plan to go all the way to Seventh Street.
They have a plan to go to Seventh Street and go a block, at least one block, if not more.
North and south.
North and south.
Right.
Yes. That is a complete Wi-Fi coverage.
Right. But will they need something more between Fourth and Seventh to do that?
Correct. And they, in their plans, they're adding additional access points and connection points than, than we would have in this project.
So instead of us paying for it from Fourth to Seventh, they would be paying for it?
Correct. It would be subsidized through that project, the additional access points beyond the 10 that we are looking at implementing with this.
Okay. And along with this, once that's up and going, that's just a normal Wi-Fi hot, you know, Wi-Fi spot that people can, can just.
This specifically?
Yes.
Would have a, a captive portal that would not be asking the same questions as a Digital Lobby, but there would still be a captive portal of some sort that would have some sort of terms and conditions.
Right. And so, what I'm just saying is if, say if my, say if my son's out of data, and he can get onto that Wi-Fi and use it that way, right?
In that area, yes. But understand that there's limited coverage with this project.
So if I may add, with the project that Mark's presenting now, this is like Wi-Fi DeKalb basic. You know, if you're thinking of tiers, with bringing on Digital Lobby, that would be DeKalb Wi-Fi plus. The area would be expanded, the analytics would be expanded, and we would be leveraging the private sector partnership to be able to do that at no cost, to very, very limited cost. And we're going to hold Digital Lobby to the no-cost, you know, end of the spectrum. So, you know, if Digital Lobby does not move forward, because there are many, many things that are going to need to be considered and worked through, and agreements are going to be, needed to be drafted, if that does not go through, you know, what we're trying to achieve is, with the budgeted funds we had allocated for this fiscal year, at least build that basic foundation in the interim, and then have Digital Lobby, if it is approved in the future, give us that plus experience. So, we're asking for basic, in hopes to one day bring back the agreement that's going to give us plus-plus.
Alderman Fanoukian?
So, Mark, with this system in conjunction with NIU, so let's say that I'm downtown, I'm going to log into the system, will I be logging in the NIU system, or will it be more public and not directly?
We are in the process of discussing who would be providing the public access, and obviously, it's not a, it's not a real big sticking point at this point, but it could either be the, the existing NIU guest login, or the city can come up with its own captive portal to be able to accomplish that. But in addition to this project, this would be extending NIU's coverage into the downtown area for students and faculty to be able to access.
So let me just.
Sure.
Little follow-up here, and Mark, you may be the one, or Herb, rather, you should be the one to answer this. So let's say it's an NIU student who's downtown, and he opens up his device and wants to jump on. If it's part of the NIU system, he'll probably log in automatically, where if it's a non-student who is not already registered on NIU's system, there will have to be some kind of a login.
Yeah, absolutely. Would you like to? I'll defer to, to Herb on that question.
Yeah, Herb, for the benefit of those watching, would you identify yourself, please?
I'm Herb Curryly. I'm Director of Broadband Development with Northern Illinois University. Been in the community for 34 years at Northern. And actually, we've been driving this project, I'll just caveat just quickly, we've been driving the Wi-Fi project downtown for almost 10 years now. Either things didn't work out for the city, things didn't work out for NIU, we got a grant, didn't work out. So this kind of is a good opportunity, I think, for both of us. But to answer your question, students will come down and they will sign in under the credentials, which is secure for them, be able to access the resources at Northern and so forth, be able to sit down maybe in one of your local restaurants and so forth, and communicate with their laptop, with their phone, and so forth. As Mark was mentioning, there is a public side of this. We can either maybe extend NIU's public Wi-Fi out there, or the City of DeKalb can provide a public Wi-Fi, we'll work in the security of that as well. Both are doable. It just depends on what direction we ultimately decide to go. Digital Lobby pays a little bit of a role in that, who will do what. That's kind of why it's, you know, shifting right now. If the City of DeKalb provides it, then maybe that's part of this system today, but later on, Digital Lobby with NIU might be able to do that. So I think that, from the sense of the project moving forward, we're looking from the Northern Illinois University side as extending our network out here, where we can get more students that are comfortable, be able to get onto their phones and access that. From the public Wi side, Wi-Fi, we hope that businesses can extend that into their businesses, rather than having to pay, give out their access and so forth, which makes a good sell for our businesses downtown. And then we do have another option, as Mark was mentioning, for security, for, you know, cameras, that we've kind of built into this. But this is a groundwork to put this in initially. We have resources, the city has resources of DUC, part of that money they're spending is to put fiber up to the, the light poles and put the power up there. Part of our expense is to provide the Wi-Fi access points, be able to get those running, and then use the NIU management system to be able to manage those and make sure that they're running, and we provide a quality service.
All right. Thanks, Herb.
Alderman Jacobson?
Prelimarily, my first concern would be, again, when discussing security and other things, what sort of liability would the city have in terms of if we own the hardware or if we've participated? Do we have cyber liability insurance? Would we need to, to look into that? What would our liabilities be?
That's something.
Not providing the utility effectively.
Director Thorson and I have talked through, the primary areas where public bodies have run into liability concerns with similar systems is when they implement or do not disclose information that either tracks individual data instead of aggregate data, or in certain circumstances where they've attempted to limit access to sites without disclosures of what their limits are. In terms of the liability for someone is on our network and is subject to a hack or, or some sort of attack like that, we would work with our insurance company to confirm if our cyber liability coverage would cover that. There has not been much in the way of case law on that topic or on the liability of municipalities, and there are many municipalities that do offer this service in that regard. When an individual is subject to a hack and they're using their, their AT&amp;T or their Comcast or whatever internet provider at home, there's not really much in the way of case law suggesting that those, the actual utility provider, the, the internet connection provider is liable for that hack unless there's something that they have done that caused or contributed towards it. So in terms of identifying and mitigating potential liabilities, it's a theoretical one. Again, we would confirm coverage with our insurer, but it's not one that, that we feel should have a significant impact on your policy consideration.
What is the total anticipated project cost? I was actually surprised that wasn't.
I was about to mention that because that was not in it because I was presenting this from a city standpoint, so I wanted to make sure that the city's liabilities were understood. The anticipated project cost as estimated is approximately $85,000. And that's going to incorporate all of the access points, the fiber optic connections, and all of the labor involved in getting all of those things put together. So, from that aspect, the, the city is asking for a do not exceed of $30,000, which puts the NIU liabilities in the $65,000 range.
Also, I wanted to make sure, obviously, right now, in the spirit of kumbaya, we're all working together, and it makes sense cost-wise to do so, I want to make sure that if we are considering down the line partnering with another provider, like we had seen in Cow tonight, or someone else, that we will have the ability going forward that NIU can't lock us out of the system, and NIU can't say, well, this is our hardware, thanks for, thanks for the investment, but this is our hardware, and I want to make sure that we have that taken care of, that we have, obviously, the lifetime of use of that equipment.
That is that third party that is alluded to in the agreement, in the intergovernmental agreement. Would it not be that third party who would have access to this system? Is that correct?
Does that answer Dave's question?
The reference to third-party access would be members of the public that'd be using the system.
Oh, I see.
The agreement does contemplate a 10-year term, but it does have a 90-day termination for convenience provision in it. As we tried to balance the interests of both parties, we were trying to establish a longer term such that the agreement could continue on in effect if it's mutually beneficial, but also being cognizant of the potential that this could, at some point, be not in the city's best interest or not in Northern's best interest. It does have, either party would have the ability to determine it at 90 days' notice.
Where does Digital Lobby fit into the agreement, or a company like that?
If Digital Lobby were to, that would return as a separate action item, there'd be an agreement either with Digital Lobby or with Digital Lobby and NIU. We haven't determined the exact scope of how that agreement would work, but that would be a separate agreement for consideration by council. And we'd make arrangements to utilize the infrastructure that's being put into place here.
Is there anything in the agreement that would say that both parties in this agreement that we're going to be asked to consider tonight would have to sign off on a company like Digital Lobby?
This agreement does not grant either party the right to unilaterally make a change like that, so we would view that as something that we would undertake with a separate agreement if that comes to fruition.
Does that answer your question, Dave, or?
It's not ideal, but yes, it's an answer.
Are we asking the same question?
Yes.
Okay.
Lastly, obviously, in terms of rolling out Wi-Fi to the entire downtown community, you're talking several business customers, several residential customers, have we done any sort of modeling on the cost and franchising fees? Obviously, through Comcast, when those people are, whether they're businesses or residents are signing up for a Comcast plan, the city receives revenue both monthly from those agreements through our franchise fees. Have we looked into what the possibility, if effectively it was free for all those customers or most of those customers, what it would cost us in terms of revenue long-term?
I guess I'm, I, if I'm, let me, let me make sure I'm understanding your question. Is it in terms of if, an offsetting franchise agreement through NIU?
If I, if I can jump in on this one, I think what Alderman Jacobson is asking, if there's an existing Comcast customer that is paying for a Comcast subscription that they elected to drop and use this system as their sole internet access, so if it was a customer that just had a data plan and did not have any cable TV or telephone or anything like that, and they opted to drop their, their data-only internet connection, would that have an adverse impact on city franchise fees? And I think theoretically, that's possible if there are a significant number of customers that fall into that data-only plan, and if this provides the same level of uptime and connection speed and access to whatever sites they may wish to view, I don't believe there's been analysis of that performed.
And I honestly, in discussions with other municipalities, I haven't heard that come up, ones that have done this, but I can certainly reach back and, and find out.
Can we look to do a simple model of what the possibility that could cost us annually would look like?
We'd have to make some estimations, but we're looking at a very narrow geographic area. Depending on, just kind of thinking in relation to your question, if we don't have the data from the private sector provider, we would not be able to even estimate the number of people within that area. So we could look at how many people are in the area, and then assume they're all Comcast subscribers, and then estimate what that amount of income could be. That would be the worst-case scenario that we could do.
And have we looked to make sure this doesn't in any way violate our franchise agreement with Comcast?
Yes. This does not violate our franchise agreement with Comcast. And with regard to at least some of the business clients, because it is a pure wireless connection and not wired, it may be less likely that they would make the conversion, also because, again, it's going to be inherently a public network and not offer the same level of security as a wired private connection. But we can try and conduct some further investigation of that issue, if the council directs.
If, if I may, there's another aspect to this that I, now that I'm understanding what the, the, the scope of the question is, there's a couple different aspects to look at this as well. And one is the, the fact that a, trying to connect to this network, it's really geared toward a one-time instance when you're in an area and you want to be able to use it, and there's timeouts that occur as that happens. A residential user that just wants to get on and watch Netflix at home is going to get frustrated with that type of setup through, through a, through some sort of viewing device or something along those lines. They would opt for more of a residential focus. The other aspect to look at is just a pure technological aspect, which is the fact that Wi-Fi signal does not like metal, and it doesn't like low-e glass and a lot of other aspects. Getting penetration into homes is a difficult option for businesses and for, for, for residents as well. So, having to try and rely on an external source to be able to go in your house and be able to use that, if I'm understanding that correctly, is a little bit more difficult. And actually, some of the ideas that have been tossed around in the preliminary discussions of this was, how can we engage the businesses and be able to leak the signal into their buildings if we wanted to go and go that route as well? And that's obviously another discussion that we can, we can have at some point, but that, the, I guess the reason I'm bringing that up is because of the technological limitations of Wi-Fi, being able to penetrate into buildings and homes.
Further discussion? Alderman Favor?
So, it sounds like we're going to have, in my mind, I would say, different channels, but potentially, you're going to have bandwidth that's going to be reserved for the cameras because they're going to eat up a lot of bandwidth. And then you're going to have the public channel that's going to be the basic internet access for others. I guess one of my questions is, does this, will this provide any additional service to like squad, squad cars being able to, you know, maybe as they're approaching the, the police station, being able to download the data, you know, from their, you know, from their, their timeout, instead of having to wait in the garage for a, at one time, I heard it was several minutes or even longer to, to download the data out of the vehicle?
I am, I haven't had those specific discussions with, with Chief Lowry or, or Chief Hicks on, on that, on those items. I will say, in past experience, we have opted not to use that for public safety purposes because when you start exiting out of, out of coverage zones, even the devices that do well to switch between Wi-Fi and cellular don't do it very gracefully. And so, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting an officer or a firefighter in a position where they scooted just out of, out of coverage area and the system was having difficulty switching back over to cellular. So, from that aspect. So, from that aspect, I would say, at this point, we're really not focused in that area. However, that can be future discussions moving forward.
And then, obviously, in the, the future is the, the city of DeKalb, and depending on what happens with, like, a Digital Lobby agreement or whatever, could be, could be further down the line. Is the future, is that, is that a long way off? And the other question is, is that, it's, it's pretty narrow. So, I, I was thinking, you know, if we had more Wi-Fi coverage, we might be able to eliminate some of the cellular cards and things in some of the equipment that we have and just go Wi-Fi for some of that data collection. But I don't know if, it's probably too limited in scope to, to enact any sort of savings that way.
I, I don't have a real good estimate for you on, on that piece. That's some, some long-term planning that I can absolutely work with, with staff on to be able to do. I, I wouldn't really be able to give you an estimate on that at that point. My, the, the initial goal is to get that, that downtown business district covered, and we can certainly talk about other business districts. And I think once the, the dominoes start falling with these projects and, and the success bearing from them, we can certainly have a much better idea of what that could look like moving forward.
And then, just one other question is, then, if we do go with some sort of a, I'm not saying Digital Lobby is the solution, some sort of.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're, I think we've shown a lot of interest in something like that. I guess, does this equipment become part of that? Do we shut this system off? Is it?
The goal for this-
Are we going to have two competing systems?
No, the goal for this is to have it integrate with the Digital Lobby system. We'll be working just on the general understanding of, of the fact that they're a platform-agnostic system gives us some flexibility with this. We're going to be working with NIU to be able to understand exactly what equipment makes sense in this area, to provide service that's reliable, that, that we can count on to be able to work. And I, I think once the, if we're given permission to move forward with the Digital Lobby or some other vendor in that space that can provide those types of, those type, that, that type of product to the city and to NIU, once we're a little bit further down that road, we can certainly circle back around. But our goal is to be able to work with a, a, for lack of a better phrase, a platform-agnostic, meaning it does not care what it's running on, type of situation. And so, we're able to put the equipment in place that makes sense and works. And no, I, the object is not to turn this into sunk cost, but really, in addition to a, a much better platform that can move forward.
I'll apologize, he spurred one more question. But, so, and this is actually, you cannot answer it if you don't want to. This is a question for NIU, then, is, would, if, if we were to go to a Digital Lobby platform or NIU was to go to that sort of a platform, is that going to replace your student logins? Or are you going to kind of maintain, like, as a student, you'll have access to Wi-Fi in our buildings, but when you're out on the street, you'll have public access to Wi-Fi, or visitors to NIU will have public access to Wi-Fi?
So, if it's a, an NIU student, and it's the, say, the cooperative of the access points that we put in throughout the city, so the tenor, so that we do, it would be a student login. So, the student would log in under their credentials, it wouldn't be onto public Wi-Fi. Anything beyond that, though? So, you get two blocks to the north, and you're, you're going to be in Corn Fest, let's say. They're not going to be able to reach, probably, at that point, the NIU. That would be on, let's say, we expanded with Digital Lobby or another vendor and that happened. The formats of those networks do change slightly. So, a student would probably log in then at the public Wi-Fi, once they're out of range of what we would be offering together as a cooperative. So, our goal was just to, our first phase, we had this kind of phased out. And like you said, Digital Lobby changed the, the rules a little for us. But we, we, our first phase is to cover that immediate downtown area. And eventually, we had hoped that we would get to Seventh Street. We would get north into the, near the library and areas like that over time, due to budget constraints and so forth. Digital Lobby kind of injects a little bit of a, a new way into this where funds will come in, help provide for that expansion further. So, we can still move ahead with phases if Digital Lobby doesn't work out, and then we would go with that model where a student logs in under their credentials and then we'd still have the public Wi-Fi available. Okay? Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So, allow me to review, if for no other reason, my own personal edification, where we are. We are being asked to approve this intergovernmental agreement between the NIU Board of Trustees and the City of DeKalb at a cost not to exceed $30,000. We're projecting the university will upwards of $65,000 support this. And at such time that the construction of this infrastructure is completed, we will then be in a position to engage a company like Digital Lobby. Not necessarily that company, but a company like that. And at that point, we ought to then be able to do some of the neat bells and whistles things that Kevin described in the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is that a fair appraisal of, of how I'm understanding this, Mark?
I believe it is, yes.
Yes, Mayor, but we want to build on that because we want to make sure that there is consensus from the council to move forward with Digital Lobby. So, as the city, is Director Thorson is working with Northern Illinois University on building what Assistant City Manager Happenstett called your basic Wi-Fi. We would, at the same time, in a dual path, then sit down and start negotiating with Digital Lobby on the premium Wi-Fi or however we want to refer to it, the more expanded network. So, that was the purpose of the presentation there at the Committee of the Whole. So, the motion right now is in regards to the intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University. It would be very helpful to know from the council members that they are in agreement for us to move forward with Digital Lobby as well.
Yeah, and I think that's what Alderman, Mark, was questioning me there during the conclusion of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, that we, we were looking for that direction. What I heard at the Committee of the Whole Meeting is that Northern has bought into Digital Lobby, our staff has bought into Digital Lobby. It appears to be a company that could provide the service to get this going from the get-go if we were to approve this intergovernmental agreement with NIU tonight.
I, I don't necessarily want to tie the Digital Lobby piece to this intergovernmental agreement. I just want to make sure that that's clear. This intergovernmental agreement allows-
Well, what was Ann Marie asking me to do, then?
Sorry, the, please go ahead.
Because basically, what I was trying to do is to wrap up the, the item at the Committee of the Whole was to seek consensus to move forward with Digital Lobby, plain and simple. For us to negotiate an agreement, bring that agreement back to the city council at a later date. Part one. Part two, city council, this is an agenda item for action on an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University, which builds that basic format or basic foundation for the Wi-Fi system. So, a, what I hear Director Thorson saying is, yes, one builds on the other, but he wants to separate the two and, and get your direction if we can proceed on both of them.
I guess I see this as more step one and then Digital Lobby, step two. But I will, you know, defer to that flip-flop if that's what we, we have. Yeah, Pat?
Real quick, two things. Mark, you had alluded to possibly looking at other companies.
Uh, well, I-
I mean, is this the only company we've talked to?
Okay, so, up until today, this is the only company that I was aware of that was able to provide the things that, that were presented to you in the Committee of the Whole.
And can I, can I jump in there?
Absolutely.
Because I want to, I want to jump in and say, this is what I would say to the council. If there is another company out there that can match every single service that has been reviewed with the city council tonight, and that has been a proven, demonstrated leader in other communities and implemented, then I would say we could look at other options. But if we get approached by individual service providers that would like to be able to offer the service, that has no experience offering the service, I would not recommend that. But if there's another company out there that wants to match every single service that's been reviewed with you tonight at the same cost, zero, then we would explore that. That would be my recommendation to you.
That was my question.
Right, and I don't want to, I don't want to cut ourselves short. But then again, I don't want somebody coming in and acting like they're giving us a better deal and we're not getting the services that we really are wanting. The second thing is, this, this other vote you want us to take, that's, does that have to be on the agenda?
I'm going to defer into Attorney Frieders.
I think in terms of the council providing some direction to continue discussions with the vendor and bring back an action item at a later date, that's not something that would require being on the agenda. So, if we're just seeking a consensus to proceed or not proceed with a given project or a consensus to continue discussions in anticipation of a future action item that will be listed on the agenda, we're comfortable with proceeding in that fashion.
And we cannot even begin to deal with a company like Digital Lobby until such time that we have this infrastructure in place. Is that what I hear, Mark?
That's, that-
Without this agreement, without getting that infrastructure in place, we're just whistling Dixie in terms of talking to another company like Digital Lobby?
Yes, and we are placing all our eggs in one basket.
Okay, good. Yes.
May I make a, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
That, you know, to avoid any further confusion among these two items, could I suggest that maybe we go ahead and vote on the resolution before us? And then you ask the rest of us as a follow-up question if we're in consensus of moving forward with talks with Digital Lobby or, or another provider of that type.
Sounds reasonable. Okay, any further discussion, anything else, Mark? Okay, it's, we've got the motion on the floor to approve this. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mark Bart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Mark. Now, Alderman Finuchin, would you kindly rephrase that so that we can then see if in fact we have consensus?
Without seeming to speak for everybody here, I think we're pretty much all in agreement that we should direct staff to go ahead and continue investigating the opportunity with Digital Lobby, but not to shut another vendor out if they were to step forward.
Consensus there?
That seems reasonable.
Okay, I see a lot of heads shaking. Yes, good. So, there is consensus. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on to item number three tonight, Resolution 2017-111, authorizing the city manager of the City of DeKalb to submit a letter of intent to participate in a grant opportunity with the Illinois Board of Higher Education to fund three Northern Illinois University work-study interns between January 1, 2018, and August 31, 2018. Motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like Assistant City Manager Patty Happenstett to speak to the, oh, Chris.
I just looked like.
Sometimes when they put Patty Happenstett down there instead of Chris Randall, and I wasn't looking up, I'm sorry, I know you're Chris Randall. I'm going to ask you to speak to this item, Chris.
Sure. Well, that was, that's a tough act to follow, so I will try to do my best here. Mayor Smith, council, a couple of weeks ago, the city was presented with a grant opportunity with NIU and funded by the Illinois Board of Higher Education for a student work program. This program provides a 50% of the salaries for undergraduate students, interns, and staff is requesting the council to authorize funding for three interns to accommodate this program in fiscal year 2018. Normally, what happens is, an increase in staffing expenditures, they occur during the budget cycle. And while the funding for this grant is for the period of January 1st to December 31st, 2018, the program is contingent upon the NIU submitting an application to the state by September 30th, so the end of this week, which then would commit the city in participating in the program. Michelle Branning, our, the city human resources generalist, she met last week with Chad Glover, Director of Jobs Plus at NIU, and she received information that the city can potentially receive $15,000 in grant money for this program. This amount would provide three departments with 20 additional work hours per week for the next nine months for half of the cost. If awarded the $15,000, the city would then match the funds and that would equate in approximately 2,222 hours of work, which is more than what one full-time employee works in a year. The interns will be assigned to the airport division of the Polk Works, human resources, and community development. As of a very important note, the airport intern would play a major, major role in the process of securing the Plan 139, Part 139, excuse me, light commercial certification that will increase the commercial traffic in the airport. This is a really, really great opportunity for the city. This program will not only strengthen the relationship and the existing community diversity between the city and NIU, but most importantly, will reinforces the city's commitment to ongoing partnership with NIU to connect the students with meaningful employment opportunities that complements their academic studies. In exchange, then, the city will also gain additional resources to complete quality projects that align with strategic goals and objectives. And speaking of strategic goals, this partnership also aligns with the DeKalb 2025 Strategic Plan, Vision of Sensual Place, and a goal of bridging NIU and the city whenever feasible to create a mutually beneficial environment by seeking few learning programs to continue the city's 50-plus years of offering internships to students. And for those reasons is that staff is seeking council approval to submit the letter of intent to participate on the grant opportunity.
Discussion. Sounds like a pretty good deal. Roll call.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mark Bart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Chris.
We need to weigh the second reading.
It's a resolution.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four on tonight's agenda, Resolution 2017-112, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for public transit funding from the Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $4,710,927. Motion, please.
Some move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Here with a description of this item, as well as a few other items on our agenda tonight, is our transportation planner, Brian Dixon. Brian?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Each year, the Illinois Department of Transportation makes available to urban and rural transit providers throughout the state of Illinois with funds to, for the operation of public transit in their communities. This is made available every year, and they, the IDOT, provides 65% of the funding with the local municipalities or, or transit agencies having to come up with the 35% allocation. The appropriation for the City of DeKalb this year is approximately $4.7 million, with approximately $2.5 million needed locally for that match. We are asking for the full allocation. However, currently, we do not have enough local match for that entire allocation. And that's one of those things, we cannot spend additional dough money if we don't have secured local funding first. Between our, what's coming up on the next- Between our, what's coming up on the next agenda item, the Federal Transit Administration funding of about $880,000, and the Voluntary Action Center who, using their own resources, allocations from the City of DeKalb Human Services Fund, City of Sycamore, Kewalki College, number of human service agencies and stuff, they're able to leverage about an additional $500,000. So we have actual funds that can leverage about $4 million of those funds allocated between local and dope. We are also working with NIU, as they've seen some declining enrollment, it's, their cost to continue operating NIU, the Husky Line service, becoming a bit more challenging. So we're looking up, using up to 20% of that allocation for NIU services, and they would provide the local match through their student transportation fees, and that will help us to continue support of NIU. We have not finalized any agreements with NIU yet, but we're keeping that 20% on reserve, which would allow us to leverage about $5.8 million. And currently, an extra $1.4 million, we do not have coverage for locally. But if we were able to identify some of those sources within the next year, we could still have access to those funds. But again, we will, we're only able to be reimbursed for our actual costs, so it's, when we identify our local sources and our actual costs, then we submit to IDOT for reimbursement for those costs. So we are seeking approval of this contract so that we can move forward, get the contract moved forward, and we can start paying VAC, their funds for operating, which it started on July 1st, and it goes through June 30th of next year.
Okay. Discussion. Alderman Noriko.
I have a question, given the fact that it's September 25th, but this agreement was effective July 1.
The state of Illinois has been going to this new, what they call Government Accountability and Transparency Act, which has increased their amount of their workload and what we have to do in order to get those contracts written up and everything. And they just started implementing this net last year, and there's still a lot of bugs in the system. So we were unable, they were unable to give us that contract until now, but it's retroactive to July 1st. So any costs that have been incurred since July 1st will be reimbursed.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Fanouken.
Just to piggyback into what Brian just said, I went to session on GADA at the conferences past weekend, and they're having a number of problems with it, that's struggling, it's very slow to roll out, it's been confusing, but they hope to continue to work some of those bugs out and make it more user-friendly. So as Brian said, the contracts going out, grants going out, have all been delayed, so that's been the issue there.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Fanouken? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, Brian, you stay right there. Resolution, number five, Resolution 2017-113, authorizing the distribution of Federal Transit Administration operating assistance funds to the City of DeKalb's contracted services provider, the Voluntary Action Center of DeKalb County for the provision of public transit between July 1, 2017, and June 30, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $780,000. Motion.
Some moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Brian?
So as noted, with our dope funds, we can use like federal funds and other local funds to add support for the local match. We have been using, we get approximately $1 million a year in allocation that's used for both operating assistance for public transit and capital assistance. And in order to leverage more of our dope funds and beyond the ability of VAC to, with their resources, we have allocated around $780,000 of our grant funds to, to VAC to be used as local match support for our dope grant. And then approximately $100,000 we use within the City of DeKalb ourselves for monitoring of VAC and all the staff projects that we must do to, in order to manage our federal and state grants. So we are seeking to use $780,000 of those federal funds to be allocated to VAC or from July 1st to June 30th of next year as local match support to the dope contract.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions of Brian? Roll call.
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Item number six, Resolution 2017-114, authorizing the first renewal of the Voluntary Action Center Transit Provider Agreement for a one-year term from October 1, 2017 through September 30th of 2018. Motion.
Some move.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Brian?
Yes, when we signed the agreement with VAC last year, it was a one-year term with the option of renewal for three additional one-year terms. So the first, the contract expires on September 30th, and we are seeking approval from city council to opt in that first renewal from October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018.
Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Number seven, Resolution 2017-115, authorizing an application with the U.S. Department of Transportation's 2017 Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery Discretionary Grant Program in the amount of $18,280,000 for the full construction of a new transit facility. Motion.
Some move.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Brian?
If you recall, a few meetings ago, we asked for a support for staff to submit a grant to the Federal Transit Administration. They have a grant program to fund a public transit facilities and buses and stuff, and at that time, we had sought approval from the council to submit that grant. Since then, just very recently, another federal funding opportunity, the Tiger Grants you may have heard of, have become available, and we would also like to submit our application for that grant. Also, it's based, it's the same facility and everything, but our, we have to adapt it, it'll be slightly different than the other because Tiger Grants focus on different items than the FTA grant did. So we have to rework some of our grant application, but in essence, it's for the same costs, and we feel that applying from multiple grant sources increases our chances of getting at least one grant source. So we are seeking the authorization to submit for the Tiger Grant application also.
Discussion. Alderman Noriko.
I just wanted to quickly say that in reviewing the supplementary material, the grant application itself, I think that staff did a good job of presenting a compelling argument for the need for this facility, given the increase in VAC services and the number of people that they reach and the people that are on the waiting list because they can't meet all the needs. I would just hope that the federal grant reviewers have common sense and would see it the same way.
Thank you, Kate. You know, I'd like to just add a comment on that. We are so fortunate to have Brian Dixon and Jessica in his office, along with Tim Alderman. Bill Fanouken has been working, obviously, in transportation most of his life and has been very, very aware. I've sat on the Policy Committee for the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, and to paraphrase Kurt Lang, the new mayor of Sycamore, and myself, we've learned so much, and we sort of scratch our heads at some of the stuff that you really, really know about, Brian, and we appreciate that. We really do. Roll call.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
I don't believe we have any new or unfinished business tonight. Before we turn it over to communications, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to any item that either was or was not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. And then ask now for our communications report to close our regular meeting. Alderman Jacobson, first ward.
I'm all but certain this is going to be a recurring theme, since so many of us went, but since I get to start, I get to steal all the way down to Ward 7, Alderman favors thunder. IMO conference was great yet again. I certainly appreciated the fact that we sent several delegates down to it. I enjoyed not only the educational sessions, but the opportunity to get to know one another better, and I think it makes for such a wonderful learning relationship, or working relationship, when we get some time outside of meetings to discuss things like sports and family and those things that pertain to us outside of our city lives. So very much appreciated, thought it was a wonderful conference.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken.
Dave, as well as what some of us will and will not eat, correct?
Indeed.
Anyway, I just want to remind everybody that the task force, of course, is at 3:30 Wednesday at Westminster, but following that, at 6 o'clock, all members of the community are invited to participate in a community meeting regarding the Annie Glynn North Project. Again, 6 o'clock at Westminster, at 8:30 North Annie Glynn, and we hope we have a lot of involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Markwart?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
Actually, two items. The folks who live on Barb Boulevard may not be able to attend the meeting, the Annie Glynn North Community Meeting. There is a meeting at Huntley School at 6:00 PM to review and discuss proposed parking regulation on Barb Boulevard. And some of us are very closely watching that. Also, I want to thank the mayor for his efforts in terms of developing the Annie Glynn North Task Force. I think it well represents many interests in that area and throughout the city. And also thank all of those, including my fellow Aldermen, who are stepping up to do extra work on that task force. Meetings are never easy, and we've had, you know, a fair number of meetings lately. So again, thank you to Dave and Bill. I know they'll do a great job. They may not necessarily always agree with each other, but I'm sure they'll work it out for the good of the city and the Annie Glynn North area.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Verbeck?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
This Saturday is an opportunity, if you want to come out to the Aurora Sportsman's Club, to support Camp Power and the DeKalb Police Department. We have silent auction, raffle, there'll be food served by the police chief, so there's an opportunity to serve if you'd like to volunteer or come out to support the group. And I also echo the Annie Glynn North comments, as well as the comments for the IMO conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. In the short time I've been your mayor, I found that these folks up here are family. I'm getting to know them better, I'm getting to argue with them more efficiently, but we're family. I can say the same thing with our staff and the many, many constituents in the City of DeKalb, who we represent in your wards and as this mayor. We are saddened when we lose family and members of our family. I'd like to pass along our condolences to Dean Frieders on the loss of his mother a couple of weeks ago, and to Ruth Scott, our deputy city clerk, on the loss of her brother just a week ago. Our sincere condolences to you. Thank you. Sue Herman, our city clerk.
No report.
Dean Frieders?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Just a note, my mom would be somewhat concerned to learn of her passing. It was my grandmother that passed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Smith blew it again. And Dean, that was really a bad football. I really apologize for that.
Oh, no.
I knew it was your grandmother, and I apologize for that.
I would echo your sentiments, so, Mayor. The support from this council and from staff is overwhelming, and it really makes this a wonderful place to work, a wonderful community to serve. I wanted to also echo briefly the comments on the Annie Glynn North Project and commend the mayor and a number of members of that committee and of our other boards, committees, and commissions for reaching out to confirm their understanding of the Open Meetings Act and applicable laws, and confirm that whatever actions they would take would be in full compliance with that. We work very diligently to comply with the act, but also to provide meaningful opportunities for all of our elected and appointed officials and all members of the public to participate fully in such an important project. And so we have shared communication. And so, we have shared communications with all members of the Task Force and every member of every elected or appointed position in the city to give them full background on that, and we encourage anyone who has any questions to reach out to staff. We'd be more than happy to talk them through some of the intricacies. Thank you.
City manager, Anne Marie Dora?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have three quick items. First and foremost, I'd like to publicly introduce Molly Talkington, our new finance director, who started serving the city last week, and we are extremely excited, and I'm extremely excited, that Molly is here. She brings a wealth of local government experiences, and I talked about previously. She comes directly from the city of Champaign, having managed their budget, which I think was in the vicinity of about $140 million. I think eight years spent there, serving them in the budget capacity. She's also served the Village of Glenview and the city of Naperville. So, one of the neat things when you look about Molly's experience is she's had an opportunity to serve communities that are larger than us. So, she's seen a variety of some of the challenges that they face. I mean, these are all different communities, but one of the things I thought was incredible is the fact that she was coming from another university town and is able to see some of those university issues that are faced in Champaign. And I have to proudly say, NIU alum, Northern Illinois University, Masters of Public Administration graduate, so, very excited. So, if you haven't met those in the audience tonight afterwards, please introduce yourself to Molly, so really glad to have her here, so. Secondly, I just want to follow up to the comments of the Aldermen in regards to the Illinois Municipal League Conference. I know one Alderman has already shared with me some information I'm going to distribute to the council to make sure that you receive all the data for those in particular that were not able to attend the Illinois Municipal League Conference. So, if there's anything that you want, any information you want to funnel through me that I can funnel to the entire council, I would be happy to do that. The other thing we want to think about is that I know that when you come back from the IML Conference, you have lots of great ideas, there's lots of programs that you've heard about in other states, or, I'm sorry, other cities. If there is information, one thing we can do is we could schedule a committee of the whole meeting where you can discuss those ideas, and so there's just particular priorities that use the council, and can give that direction unilaterally as a body. So, if this is something you're interested in, please let me know. If there is, and there's particular sessions that you sat in on, if you could please direct those to me, we would gladly put together all that information and present that at a future agenda for you to discuss. And then if there are items you want us to follow up on, and then you could prioritize those for us. So, just an idea, we haven't done that before, but knowing the last couple of years of how excited you are when you get back from these, I thought that I might broach that as a possibility. And the last thing I just want to point out, a lot of discussion on the Annie Glen North Revitalization Plan. I want to point out the location and the fact that this is at Westminster Presbyterian Church, and that this was an intentional decision made to locate in the Annie Glen North neighborhood. So, we wanted to be able to make both the Task Force meetings and the public meetings very accessible to those that lived in the neighborhood. So, residents, students, those that might walk to the meeting. So, if you're asked as an Alderman, why aren't you having it at City Hall? It is intentional to make this as convenient to the people, to the residents that live in this neighborhood. We also looked at locations as far as what's going to be conducive to giving presentations, but then have breakouts where you can have, whether it's the Task Force or the community meetings, where then the public has an opportunity to participate in small group meetings. So, this has been very intentional, and I want to applaud the fact that this is happening because it is going to encourage greater community input by the fact that we're going into the neighborhood, we're not asking people to come to City Hall, City Hall is going to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Now, Patty, I've introduced you already, but you weren't over there. Assistant city manager, Patty Hoppinsted.
Yes, I am over here, and just to add to the Annie Glen North Revitalization Plan information, we're really trying to make information accessible to the community via our website. We did send out a press release. We posted hundreds and hundreds of flyers throughout over 75 locations in the community. We had three interns and our management analyst, Erin Stevens, spend two days out in the field, just walking the area, areas throughout the entire city to post flyers at 7-Eleven, at, you know, restaurants, the library, and so on, because we wanted to make sure the word got out, not only through the press release, through actual flyers in both English and Spanish throughout the community. In addition to that, we've posted information on our website, we've tweeted, we've pushed information via Facebook. So, hopefully, and now by us discussing it this evening, for those who didn't know about the meetings, I hope that everyone is aware, please pass the word on. We went into the neighborhoods, we spoke to the property management companies within the AGN plan area and provided flyers to them and said, you know, we went into different buildings and posted it on bulletin boards. So, we've really tried to make sure that the word is out throughout the community. But I ask members of the Task Force, I have city council members, please direct your constituents, direct your neighbors and friends to the city website. If you want flyers printed, staff can have a stack of 50 flyers for each of the Aldermen and Task Force members, so you also can pass out the flyers and help us spread the word. So, if you go on the city's website and you go to the quick links, the quick links are now in alphabetical order, and it so happens that in alphabetical order, the first one on the list is AGN Revitalization Plan. If you click on that quick link, it will take you to various sections and information of the plan itself. So, you will find on there links to the agenda for the Task Force, the brochures for the community meetings, a link that takes you directly to the full comprehensive agenda item with the Kameras Proposal, the CGS Proposal, staff memo, and all supporting documentation that was approved by the city council at the April 14th meeting. We talk about next steps. We will be adding a section to this page that's going to be called Updates, and we'll talk about success stories and things that the Task Force is working on to keep the community informed of what's going on with the plan and the project. And we also have a section dedicated to reviewing the planning process. The timeline for the plan is there, so people can see what each phase of the plan and when it is scheduled to be completed. And then we explain the framework of the plan itself and the various phases of the plan. So, Erin Stevens, management analyst in the city manager's office, information is directly on here as a contact person for any information. Please contact Erin if the community has any questions or feedback on what we should be adding to the website. What information does the community want to have at their fingertips as we continue down the AGN Revitalization Plan process? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our police chief, Jean Lawrie. Jean?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a little bit of good news for us tonight, but I want to give you a little bit of a prelude to the good news. As you know, time after time, I come before you in regard to our annual report, and I talk about factors in regard to causing crime. And there are certain factors that the police have some direct impact on, especially from the enforcement capacity, and then there are other factors that the police don't have as much impact on, at least from a traditional sense. And you know that there's been programs implemented through the police department like Camp Power, which is very non-traditional and really outside of our wheelhouse, but with the help of some of our community stakeholders, we brought that to the table, and it continues to be a success. We'll also be looking to introduce another juvenile program this year in regard to looking at juvenile delinquency from another view and bringing parents into the accountability equation and supporting parents through that process. That will come to you down the road. I could go on and name a few others, but the one point I want to make is the good news that we have today. The city was notified that we will be the recipient of a $75,000 grant through the Department of Justice in regard to the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. And as I said in introducing these remarks, I come to you time and time again at our annual report, and I talk about the demand for services in regard to folks in crisis, behavioral disorder, folks in crisis, suicidal subjects, well over 250 last year. So, the big problem has been, what do we do? And where do the police sit with this? And time and time again, we have very limited resources in this county to address inpatient mental health services and to address people in crisis. So, Deanna Kada from the Mental Health Board, and Commander Jason Levertin, and former management analyst, Lauren Stott, and I might add, by the way, this kind of points out the value of the management analysts in the system and as being a part of a grant collaboration team, applied for this Department of Justice grant, and we've received notification that we've gotten this $75,000 grant. The secondary good news is this, this will help us plan on how to provide the police and the community with the best services we can when we deal with folks in crisis and people with behavioral health issues. But what it also sets us up for is there's a potential for future funding down the road to actually take a plan and implement it by providing funding from the federal government that could be close to $300,000 a year to help us deliver a service to meet people in crisis and also alleviate the police from having to try and work in an arena that they really aren't qualified to work in and try to respond to people with mental health disorders. So, our goal will be to use this money to plan a way to get resources to people as soon as we can to address their behavioral health issues. This is a huge step forward. It's a big kudo to the city. There's not many of these grants going out across the country, and it could pave the way for some funding down the road and hopefully, an answer to some of our needs regarding folks in distress. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, and congratulations on submitting that proposal and again, on our receiving that today, or notice of it today. Okay, Molly, no long speeches now. Would you like to make a few remarks as our new finance director?
I would. I just want to say thank you for bringing me to the city of DeKalb. I'm very excited to start working with everyone, and I've got to jump right into the budget process, so I'm sure I'll be seeing you again soon.
Our fire chief, Eric Hicks, is not with us tonight. However, we have our assistant chief, Jeff McMaster. Hi, Jeff.
Good evening. On September 16, the fire department responded to a very serious fire in a mixed-use building here in the city, and it was a very large fire. Your firefighters did a great job of keeping that fire in a single occupancy. There was a potential there for having a large loss of life fire. And you see over the news several times a year that no community is exempt from large loss fires. We'd like to also thank the other surrounding fire departments for assisting us as well as the DeKalb Police Department. We just wanted, I just wanted to reaffirm that the fire department is committed and continues to work with other city departments to make sure that occupancies within the city are safe for visitors, for students, and for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Community development director, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items as well. First of all, I would like to commend Assistant City Manager Patty Hoppinsted and her staff in the city manager's office for facilitating all of the outreach that's occurring as part of the Annie Glen North Project. As part of any plan, that is one of the hardest things to achieve, and I know she and her staff and all of the parties involved are working very hard to get that process off to a right start, so I'm very proud of what's happening there. Also, I wanted to report that I too had an opportunity last week to go to an out-of-community meeting for the Illinois Tax Increment Association, meetings that were in Chicago, it was on Wednesday and Thursday, preceding your IML meetings. And I know a lot of the people that were at that conference were staying in the city to continue to the IML Conference. So, as part of that workshop, we were provided with information on the legislative update, which I will be forwarding more information to the council as a follow-up to our information and discussions that we had on the TIF closeout and phase-out meetings. And also, interestingly, we attended or had some workshops on some of the changes that are happening in retail and the impact that it has on TIF districts. So, what we've seen as being successful in some of the prior years in TIF districts, we're learning through the presentations that were made that sometimes that's not always going to be successful moving forward. So, I hope to share some of that information with the community. The retail sector is changing significantly and having an impact on our budgets, so it is something that we're going to be spending some time taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Joellen. Our public works director, Tim Alderman.
I want to begin by saying thank you to city council on behalf of city staff for approving the internship programs. It's going to make a big difference for the airport and our aspirations moving forward in making that a profitable business. Also, want to point residents to our city website for updates on our construction activities, and I want to give some of the highlights here. Our street maintenance program is wrapping up. We do have one significant activity that's going on this week, and that is the reconstruction of the Turn Lane on Annie Glen North, heading north at 38. And we've got that, two lanes closed down, so we have two lanes going to one lane there. It was quite a backup today. We tried to sign that several days prior to that activity to let people know, recognizing that that was going to be some of the impact of that construction. But that was an area that really needed to be addressed, and so we're happy to get that done. Also, wanted to let you know that the Kishawaki Bike Path Project continues to make great advances. The weather is cooperating with no rain and good sunny skies, and so, we're continuing to lay hot mixed asphalt on that path, and it's really starting to shape up.
Thank you, Tim. Human resources director, Chris Randall.
No report.
Mark Thorsten, our IT director.
Thank you, Mayor and council. A couple of items. One is, I know that a couple of council people alluded to this, but at the Illinois Municipal League, I'm actually very excited to hear that the topic of discussion is the data gathering aspects and how critical that is to helping cities and municipalities and government organizations to help understand their customers better and provide better services. So, I'm really excited to hear that that was a topic of conversation. In addition to that, I wanted to give an update on the Enterprise Resource Planning Project that staff is working on. We are, and we have narrowed down to three vendors, and we are scheduling the demonstrations in October. Our hope is to have a recommendation to council by the second meeting in November, so.
Thank you, Mark. Moving forward on the agenda, item J, I'm told that we do have a couple of items for executive session, if it's the wish of the council, the titles of the executive session items. Number one, approval to hold an executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided in five, ILCS 120-2C5. And number two, approval to hold an executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in five, ILCS 120/2C11. I'd ask for a motion to recess into executive session.
Make that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
We will now recess into executive session.